Good evening, everyone. How are you guys? It's good to have customers in the audience. Good to see you guys. We're going to go ahead and get started here. I'd like to call the August 12th, 2025 work session of the Forsyth County Board of Education to order. The members have an agenda before them. Is there a motion to adopt?
Make a motion to adopt.
Second.
A motion by Mrs. Hoyes, a second by Mr. Grimes. All in favor? Unanimous. All right, welcome, everyone. If you can, please rise and join me for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. We have a brief agenda tonight. First up is community engagement and lifelong education, 25-26 priorities, with Dr. Valerie Lowe, the good Dr. Lowe.
We are going to give you an update tonight just on what we're working on as a department this particular school year and what we're focused on. You've seen this document before, but it just kind of goes through our areas of our work. And our area really focuses, and especially what I'm going to share tonight, the learner profile and culture, climate, and community. So these are our fantastic leaders that we get to work with every day, and our different priority areas is how we've kind of divided this up tonight. So I'm going to quickly go through some dates, some other things, and we'll make sure you have calendar invites and things like that as part of that. The first priority area that we're working on is community engagement and partnerships. And so a lot of that involves the community events that you guys have already participated in. So those list of dates there, some of the big ones, you know, around foundation work, our stakeholder summit, the Heroes Women's Leadership Event, the Partner Connect. So a lot of those are going to be on your calendars, and we will provide you more information about that as the days, the weeks and months go along. But those are just some of the big dates that you guys might want to be involved in or will be involved in. Other things that we work on are the graduation dates and the schedules for graduation. Do you have these dates? And again, we'll make sure you have calendar invites, but we do that schedule a couple of years in advance, and so we're working now with them on the 2027 graduation dates, but those are there as well for you guys. Part of our work involves the Focal Center, and you all have participated in events at the Focal Center. We had our year-end review last week and had a great event, just kind of talking about the reflecting on what we did last year at the Focal Center. You can see the number of events over in 550 different engagements that we've had over there with Dawn and her team, doing great work in getting the community to that particular space on our campuses. We're also launching the season this week with Charlie and the Chocolate Factory. So the rest of those dates are on there as well for our theater series for this year, as well as the Penguin Project in January. Most of our work this year recently is focused on Partner Connect and rolling out our new partnership structure that replaced partners in education. So these are just some of the documents that we've been working on, just to strengthen that home, community, school relationship, particularly with our business and industry. And so we worked on our implementation guide for schools around partnerships, but we've also worked on a particular landing page and spot where our schools can post opportunities that they have in their own schools with partnership needs and volunteer needs. So we're rolling that out and meeting with all the schools now. Part of that has been the onboarding system that we've developed. We've also tried to do business and industry mapping with school zones, so if I'm a particular school zone, just easier to find all the businesses located near me who might potentially want to partner. And then working schools, working with schools to help them develop individual school needs. So talking with teachers, talking with counselors and staff, just to identify what kind of volunteer needs or needs, individual needs do they have for their individual communities. The volunteer platform is up and running. We're slowly getting that in place, but that's the website there, if you want to take a look at that at some point in time. This is going to allow kind of a one-stop shop for our schools to be able to post things that they need volunteers for, whether that's school supply donations to volunteers for watchdog dads or other events. And so we're excited about this, being able to capture all the schools in one particular area, making it easy and consistent for our families and our business and industry partners. And so that work is ongoing throughout the year. The second priority area involves our pathway and instructional support for career tech and fine arts. I gave you in your board documentation a list of our pathways that we currently are offering this particular school year. And then our work this year really is just, you know, monitoring trends and setting improvement goals. We've got 10 schools going through industry certification visits, and that's similar to maybe accreditation review. It's a five-year review cycle. And then just celebrating the work that's been happening with some things that we've been working on over the past several years. The photo on the right, the bottom right, I picked that photo. This is a student that was in the first graduating class from Alliance. He interned at JA. That's him standing with us in front of the Delta spot inside the junior team at Discovery Center. And then just last week, I got the picture, just above that, the picture of him. He just graduated from Auburn and is taking a job officially with Delta. So he told us back then that he was going to work for Delta, so always like those success stories that we can share. And then we just got our updated numbers with our CTSO student memberships. And so that number continues to speak to the involvement of our students and just the growth of our CTSOs. That's a big part of our teachers' work. It is co-curricular, so it is part of their standards, but we have a lot of students who take opportunities to have those leadership experiences. So we're super proud of that work moving forward. The students on the bottom right are two students. That's them at Coal Mountain Elementary School many years ago. Those are the same two students in the upper picture there, at the same world championships and state championships. But that shows the longitude of our robotics programs from those little students' elementary school, and then they've graduated, and they're now probably about 25 years old. So that's a good reminder of the impact of our CTSOs. Similar work with our fine arts, just a lot of events that our students are involved in, a lot of competitions, awards, art shows, things that they're getting involved in this particular school year, and then again, other things that we work on measuring with our graduation rates and just other diploma sales and things that are fine arts students. So very busy time for fine arts ramping up as well. We also have a focus this year on mentoring, just strengthening our mentoring program. A lot of our teachers, especially with career tech, are coming from industry, and so making sure that those connections are strong and partnership with HR, with the teacher academy has been great. So that is a focus of ours for this year moving forward and one of our goals. These are some of our larger events that we host, and again, I gave you a full calendar in your board report of all the different dates that we work with, with particular events, but those are some of our bigger ones that are more district-wide events that we listed there for you all to have. The calendar, again, is linked there. We also link the CTSO master calendar, just so that you can kind of see the magnitude and kind of where our students are traveling and how they're competing. And then another thing that we do in terms of keeping dates organized or our pathway, our industry advisory boards. So we have industry advisory boards for all of our different areas that we bring our business and industry in for meetings throughout the year, so that schedule is there as well. One thing we're excited about this year is we're offering a parent night, just in general, about pathways. What are they? You know, just that kind of thing, because we get a lot of questions with that. So we've got this night planned at Focal for October 14th, just some general education about the options that students have the ability to take in high school with both career tech and fine arts. We've got our mock interview dates out. Those happen in the spring of the year, and then we have a big dual enrollment information night for our families in January, just gearing up for dual enrollment for them to learn. So those district nights have worked well for us, to be able to just kind of get everybody together to hear the same message, and that helps our schools as well. And then another thing that we do every year are basically internal reviews for our school, our CTAE program specifically. So this year, East Forsyth High School has that review. So the review team is made up of other teachers, counselors, parents, business and industry. So we do one or two of those a year, and so this year, if anybody's interested in serving on one of those, the one at East Forsyth is on November 4th. So it's kind of a day-long mini-review of their programs and pathways and how they're performing in those areas. And then our last priority area is around long-range planning. We are sunsetting on our current workforce strategy that we began in 2022. I think this is probably our third version of that that we do every four to five years. And so this particular year, we are working with Carl Vincent Institute at UGA to lead that work. We're going to look at pathway alignment. That's the work that we're doing this semester with them, just looking at numbers, looking at our programs, looking at just some high-need areas. And then in the spring, we'll be doing some community survey work and listing sessions with our CTAE folks that are involved in that. And then '26, '27 is when we'll have those bigger community visioning events and developing our workforce strategy through 2031. So that's the next two-year plan for that. Part of that ties into House Bill 192, which is the Top State for Talent Act. This was passed recently along with House Bill 982, which was passed last year, that basically streamlines the list of what Georgia considers high-demand career pathways. And so there's a lot going on right now around that. It brings a lot of different government agencies together. It also brings Perkins funding. We get a little bit of Perkins funding from the federal government with the workforce. We owe a funding, and so we're writing a streamlined plan as a state, and our part of the federal money has been moved over to the Department of Labor, so out of the Department of Ed and to the Department of Labor. So all this is kind of happening at one time. This also has the Georgia Match piece, which is where students get a letter in the mail letting them know as a junior or senior of all the institutions in Georgia that they would be accepted into automatically, so they don't have to go through that process, so they can go through Georgia Match, and that makes it easier for college admission. These are what the statewide list looked like, so every region, we're in the ARC, obviously, but the Atlanta region, high-demand careers. For the first time, we are seeing fine arts and some of the other academic areas listed as high-needs, and that, you know, goes to what's happening with the film industry, obviously, in Georgia in a lot of ways. So that ties our fine arts work into what we're doing as well, into our workforce needs, which is great. And then we've matched, you know, what pathways are we offering that appear on this full high-demand pathway list, and we are in very good shape there as a district, so that was good to see. There are increased CCRPI points if we do offer these high-demand pathways in our districts, so that, we've been reviewing that. We've taught about the economic development certification. We'll officially be awarded that in September, but that's kind of the roadmap that we went through as a district, starting in 2023 with our five-year federal review. We put that kind of in play after that, just to look at our needs, and we finished that process in May. And so that will be awarded by Georgia GEDA to us in September, so we're excited about that. And then we're about to launch our Educator Workforce Academy. So that was something we developed with our certification process. It's going to take 15 to 20 teachers each year through an intensive four days, learning about economic development and workforce development statewide, but also, obviously, in our own community. So that, we are excited about getting started as well. So that is what we are currently working on as a department, so if you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
No, I'd just say that this weekend, a gentleman stopped me and was talking about the importance of, I guess, the difference in education 25 years ago and today. And he was talking about public education needs to be an all-card system, so that kids can go and pick what they're interested in and what their passion is in. And I was like, have you seen our career and tech program? And he's like, no. So I sent it to him, and he was like, okay, this is not even like close to what he was thinking about. He's like, beyond his expectations. He was like, oh, my gosh, he wishes he was in school now. And so that's just because of the work you guys have done in your department and everything like that, so thank you for that. And then I think the other thing is, it's just important for, because the graduation rate is what in your program?
100.
100%. So it's good also, and we've talked about this, of getting the homeless youth involved into the program and the ESOL students into that program to help them graduate school. So thank you so much for what you're doing.
Yeah. All right, good. Thank you.
You guys don't have too much going on, huh? Almost nothing.
And they're down a person right now, so.
Good stuff.
Yeah.
Well, we're really proud of you guys. You guys are a credit to our school system and really are the differentiator, what sets us apart, so thank you guys for what you do. All right, next up is Mr. Derek Hershey with Review of Policy GAAA Equal Opportunity Employment. Mr. Hershey, how's your shoulder doing?
Ah, it's doing great, thank you.
Can you wave to us to see how, oh, wrong arm.
Ah, good stuff. I am trying to, let me see if I can move to my left hand here.
Would you like Ms. Hoyes to help you with the mouse?
No, I'm okay, thank you, though. I appreciate it. Well, as Dr. Lowe got to share a lot of great information, I see that I get to work through Policy GAAA, and so I'm excited to be here today. So this is, this is the review of the policy, correct? So this is the policy that we're bringing forward in terms of the review. And we contacted legal counsel on this because it's been such a long time. As you can see, the adopted, the original date was 1995, and then it was reviewed in 2016, so it's been a long time. And so we worked, reached out to legal counsel, and at the end of the day, the advisement that they gave us was really narrowing down the complaint's procedure and moving the procedure, the procedural items within that policy over to the regs. And so that's what we've done with this. You can see a couple of things were repeated in here as well, and so the attorney's advice, just to clean up the legal language, and then you can see here, we added some information that they felt like was important legally. And then at this point, all the information below turns into procedural items pertaining to how we're going to enact the policy, and that's where we've moved that into our regs. Any questions there?
So the policy remains essentially substantially the same, it's just reorganized?
Correct. The policy remains the same, how we enact it in terms of the procedures we carry out with investigations. And all this does, it gives us flexibility, especially Title IX is included in here, and so if Title IX changes, the rules of Title IX change our procedures. Title IX will still be the same, the policy stays the same, but how we approach it in terms of our complaint procedural process may change if we need to.
Okay. I probably should have started with this, but for the benefit of the public, the board has been going through every single one of our policies this year, so each meeting, we review a small number of them, and this is just part of that process that we've been going through. So any questions, comments, concerns? No? All right. You've got one more, Mr. Hershey, before we let you go back to your seat. It's Review of Policy GARH Employee Leaves and Absences.
Yes, so in, this actually came into law July 1st. I thought this was, this was appropriate. So this was actually reviewed last year, 2024. We made a few updates to it. The main revision of this policy is new legislation that came out that mandated leave for bone, marrow, and organ transplants, and so that's the crux of this one. The legal, our legal counsel, again, reviewed, they've added a couple of changes to it, but the majority of it essentially focuses on the verbiage to support the organ donor, the organ and bone marrow donor. And we also tried to clean up some of the language that, you know, you can see the numbers in there and things like that, just to try to make it a little bit more consistent with the other. The other thing, under personal leave, our legal counsel advised us to include, the superintendent has designated, may refuse to allow an employee to take personal professional leave if qualified substitutes are not available. That gets us so that if we are in a pinch, for whatever reason, with staff shortages, I'll be honest, our principals really work with our staff now to be able to do that anyways. That just wasn't included in our policy, so it added a little bit of meat by putting in the policy. Any questions?
Questions, comments? All right. Nope, questions or comments? So these two policies will sit for public review for 30 days, and then they'll be brought back to the board for adoption. So we'll take public feedback, if any, and make a vote. Thank you, Mr. Hershey.
You're welcome.
All right, next up is future agenda items. I do have one, I've shared with the board, a proclamation that we represented from the members of the community regarding showing, expressing support for childhood cancer awareness. That will be added, if everybody agrees with it, to next meeting's agenda. I've also invited Georgia Highlands, who's the group that asked us for our support on this, to come, and they'll be here, they'll say a couple of words, and then we'll go ahead and adopt it if the board is agreeable to that. So does anyone else have any other future agenda items? Susie, you want to add something? No? Okay. Anybody out there? No? All right. Next one.
Well, I didn't put it on there, but do you guys want a, just a quick update on how the first week went, just for the good of the public?
Yeah, why not?
I only have, I've got four pages, but it's double-spaced and it's very large font.
Just read quickly, please.
I'll go quickly. Now, listen, we've had a fantastic opening week of school. Obviously, our principals are the ones on the ground that make it happen, but I also just want to publicly say that this group out here has done a lot of work, a lot of work behind the scenes. So I'm just, I won't go through everything that we went through this morning at our cabinet meeting, but I'll hit some of the high points. So right now, as you, you know, probably hear from time to time that not every child's schedule is 100% perfect yet, so counselors are in the thick of schedule changes and working on that. But one thing that we have not seen that we thought we might is an uptick in counselor visits due to students' lack of devices. We actually were kind of bracing for sort of an increase in that, and we haven't yet, so that's good. Right now, our Spark program, for our program that we have for birth to five-year-olds, we've got space for 180 kids. We're already at 126, probably some more came in today since we talked, but that's great. Larry's staff, his auditor, bookkeeper, have been all over the county, working with new bookkeepers and training, is going swimmingly with that. By this Friday, our HR team will have personally visited each one of our over 500 new staff members, which, I'll be honest, I didn't realize that Derek's group was doing that, but what a tremendous message that sends to our newest staff about the relationship with the district office. And I don't want to jinx this, but right now, and this would really be the envy of other counties around us, but we're currently sitting at a 99.5 vacancy fill rate for all of our staffs. So in other words, we are 99.5% fully staffed right now, which is, which is a big deal. One-to-one Chromebook distribution's gone very well. I think 23, up today, we said, Mike, up to 24,000 of the 31,000 Chromebooks that have to go out to Bill and High Schools have been assigned. To this point, we have had, at least that have made it to our level, four families that have said they do not want those Chromebooks and have, you know, refused it. So they talked to their school administration, they talked to someone on Mike's staff, if that's a concern. As of right now, it's four. I mean, that may go up a little bit, but it hasn't. Our special education programs in particular have done a great job of working one-on-one with students and families, students that are potentially in a self-contained program, having to haul those back and forth every day. We've made accommodations to take care of those, and I think so long as we continue to maintain great relationships with our families, we work through a lot of things that would otherwise derail some of what we've, you know, put out there and been doing. Food nutrition is starting off the year with 27 assistant managers. I think this is really important to note, and we're super glad to have Todd back. He's not here tonight, but back. He's been out on sick leave for a good bit, but glad he's back. But 27 assistant managers, the goal is to get an assistant manager at all 43 schools, but what that's really about is building leadership capacity. And when we hear that, we always think about assistant principals and principals and that sort of thing, but it's vital that we've got succession plans in place for all of our different district leadership positions. And having been a principal, you know, we could go a day or two down an assistant principal, but if you had your cafeteria manager go out for any length of time, it's a nightmare, you know? So this is fantastic, and that's part of the reason we put Todd in that role, because he's a leader developer, so really good about that. We're working our way through some supply issues with our food vendors. You know, for the last several years, we've had a Buy USA initiative, you know, with our federal government when it comes to our food program. You can only use 10% of the food in your cafeteria, only 10% of that food can come from outside the US. That becomes a real problem, like with fruit, you know, and fresh fruit and vegetables, that sort of thing. So we're struggling to have bananas right now at all of our cafeterias at the level we used to, but working on that. We've had great support, you know, as we've started out with this, with this limiting personal technology, anecdotal reports popping up, and hopefully you get some of these, hopefully some of these make it to you. But parents have told me, they've unsolicited, shared with me, how their kids are making friends at a more rapid pace than they had before. When you stroll through cafeterias, you'll see kids checking their phone at the high schools, realizing that they're not missing anything, because nobody was texting earlier, and then they're conversing, which is really cool to see. Our principals are pretty stoked about all this. Unintended consequence, vending machine sales are down. Nobody factored in that most kids are using their Apple Wallet or whatever it is on their phone, they're, you know, to pay at the vending machine, and I know Sarah Taylor's excited to hear about that, that anti-soft drink, Sarah Taylor. Our new threat assessment behavior management tool, or threat assessment management tool has now been fully implemented with everybody trained up on it, and it has been far more efficient, and the primary users of this are singing the praises of Todd Shirley's department over that. Matt Wark and his crew, we had 13 summer, or school renovations happen over the course of the summer with life cycle upgrades, HVAC and so forth. A few bugs out there, but they've been working around the clock and have done a fantastic job. They've had an overwhelming number, not having to do with HVAC, but of like carpentry, work orders, and other things, and they've been able to maintain a 24-hour response time on that. When people hear that their AC is out, that can get frustrating. A lot of those parts are held up with supply chains, and it's kind of tied directly to tariffs and other things going on beyond our control, but we've brought portable units in where we need to and trying to meet the needs that way. We have facilitated over 30 meetings of parents with, whose children have IAPs or 504s. These 30, now probably about 32, I think, at the last check, are wanted devices added to their child's IAP or 504. And I just think it's really important to clarify publicly, a doctor's note does not force a change in an IAP or 504. A doctor's note informs it, and it's certainly taken into account, but our stance from the beginning of this is, for something, a personal device to be added to a 504 IP, they've got to demonstrate that it's medically essential. And certainly, students monitoring blood sugar and those types of things are, you know, essential, but we've got, we've got this push. However, when you think about the fact that we've got, care of 9,000, give or take, students with a 504 IP, and we've had 32 that have come forward on this, we're still, we're still doing pretty good in that regard. The fact that we had BYOT the last 20 years, people have really just become accustomed to that, and so we're, you know, we're weaning people off of BYOT. Bus routes, I can't report today's yet, but the very first day of school, that tier-one elementary, we didn't get the all-clear number on that till about 5:03, and on Friday, that 5:03 was down to 3:51 PM. High school, the first day was 6:11 PM. On Friday, that was down to 5:28. And at middle school, we've gone from 6:39 down to 5:48. So kudos to Chief Satterfield and company out there, great job there. And the last thing I would say to kind of wrap this all up, the rollout of device-free learning or distraction-free learning has been tremendous. It's because of the things that we talked about, the cabinet talked about back in the spring, in terms of making sure that we're consistent across the board with school-to-school, teacher-to-teacher, principal-to-principal. That's been a big, you know, reason for the early success, but the other thing has been the communications plan that we rolled out, and by "we," I mean Michelle Dugan and her department. The principals have gone either way to thank us for the work Michelle's department did to make sure we had consistent messaging going out from every school, maybe on their letterhead, but saying the same messages. It was a one-stop-shop that Michelle created for them with all the resources, and I really do believe that's why we've had a early success with that. So it's been a great opening week.
I just want to add to that, just publicly to thank Mr. Satterfield. We had a citizen that reached out to us about a possible unsafe bus stop, and his staff went and investigated and got with the county and mitigated it, so thank you for doing that. I don't think I sent you an email or anything, thank you, so I want to do it now, so thank you.
Anything else?
Oh, I got a lot of things, but we'll stop there.
Thanks. All right. Well, good job, guys. It really has been a smooth year. I know my middle schooler, who transitioned from virtual to in-person this year, is loving it. He's like, he's like stoked, which, you know, that's great to see, so it's, I'm getting a lot of, you know, you get some naysayers on the phone policy, but for the most part, a lot of positive feedback. I heard a story at West Forsyth High, the kids were playing Uno, and the staff was like, we haven't seen this in years, you know?
Yeah.
So I mean, I think, I think once we get past this initial, you know, transition, like everything else, people tend to not like change, I think, I think in the long run, it's definitely for the best, so.
But one thing I would throw out there, Chairman Vada, is we're looking at doing a fundraiser next week. I know we don't talk about all of our fundraisers, but we're going to do one next week. We haven't picked out the charity yet or the program, but we have got to capitalize on the fame of Casey Martin. So I think we're going to have an autograph signing session with Casey, and the proceeds will be donated to, you know, to the board's choice of charities.
We probably need to have, have to have them come here and do a presentation for us, maybe a reenactment, I think.
Today's show, I mean, Friday, Sunday, and today.
He's famous. Anything else, guys? All right. Next up on the agenda is executive session. Do I have a motion to enter executive session for personnel?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Grimes, second by Mrs. Hoyes. All in favor? Unanimous? All right, we'll be back.
Have a good night, everybody. Thank you all.